Quick snapshot of our success in 2020. I know we're on a strict timeline, so if we could just, this is our initial slide with some of the key highlights, obviously the one to the right, we always in the forefront of our minds, but we had remarkable year despite the challenges with COVID-19. So if we could go to the next slide, thank you. So just an outline of what I'm going to talk about tonight for the next few minutes is just a review of the notable outings that we hosted, the impact of COVID-19. Highlight of very high-level financial snapshot of how we performed. And then how do we take what occurred in 2020 and how do we continue to keep the momentum going? It's sad to say though, but the COVID-19 pandemic actually gave the golf industry an incredible shot in the arm. Golf industry had national records in rounds hosted, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we go in. And then of course, the few of the capital needs which we've already talked about, and then the long-term planning and how do we think ahead? So, next slide please, Kelly, thank you. So the notable tournaments, it was, we were thrilled to be able to host the all-professional tour. We tried to host that in 2019, some of you might remember, and due to the incredible flooding that occurred here in south-central Kansas, we unfortunately had to cancel. But we did host our first official professional tournament here at Sand Creek Station. Of course, we hosted a very successful railer. And then with our second tour of duty with the, what is now the Central Links Golf Foundation, used to be the Kansas Women's Golf Association. The Central Links Golf Foundation is a merger of the Kansas City, the Kansas Golf Association, and the Kansas Women's Golf Association, and we hosted a fantastic state amateur in July. Next slide. And then what we're going to do is give Zach Frye, he came tonight, he's our head golf professional, give you all just a quick overview about the success of our PGA Junior League in 2020 and maybe plans for this upcoming year. Zach?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. One, very encouraging. Two, with the hard year that we had this past year with getting more and more juniors out in the golf course.
I'm the one that told him that.
Yeah, no, sorry. No, just with PGA Junior League, this will be our fourth year hosting this program. And for those of you who don't know what PGA Junior League is, it's basically a program for kids that are fairly new to golf, but also have that competitive edge that have been playing for a while. And it gives them an opportunity to play in a competitive environment where we offer one-on-one instruction, team instruction, and then also they get to travel to golf courses in Wichita, Hutchinson, basically courses that they don't normally get to play, including country clubs, other golf courses. So it's a great program for us, and this will be our fourth year. We started with eight juniors, our first two years we launched. We went from eight to 16 to 25 last year, and then now we're looking over 30. So just the encouragement of parents wanting to get their kids still involved in outdoor sports, especially in golf, you know, it's just a great, great thing for us. So we're really looking forward to this year.
So I can tell you Zach deserves all the credit for building a formidable presence in PGA Junior League. I was a little skeptical at first, and I remember the first time that I went out and saw really everything that occurs with PGA Junior League at Crestview, and I bought into it immediately. So Zach, thank you amongst all the great things you do for us at the golf course. So, you know, COVID hit, and I remember having a budget review with Kelly and Donna, and we were scratching our heads. It was early March, and we're like, how are we going to get through this year? And we literally were thinking, you know, it's DEFCON 1, we're going to have to lock the front door, and it's basically James and I and Zach are going to be mowing the golf course. And then low and behold, who knew what would happen? But we at Kemper Sports took an incredibly proactive step. Our team at the corporate office did a fantastic job of streamlining protocols of how we could still remain open, provided that local government health departments would allow us to. And we got some guidance, and I really appreciate Kelly and Suzanne and Chris and Donna's support and the way we all communicated with each other to find a plan of action that we could provide golf, and it could be done in an extremely safe manner. So the staff here really did remarkable work, and I appreciate their support for that. But, you know, we had, and understandably, the corporate outing space took a major hit, all competitive competitions, they closed, you know, we lost the Summit League, we lost all the spring college tournaments. But Peter robbed Paul, I guess is the way you could use it, because for those tournaments that canceled, daily fee play was just off the charts. And we spaced tee times, we allowed single rider golf carts, we disinfected. I remember watching Zach disinfect every critical touch point on the clubhouse and the trash cans and the restrooms and the golf carts every time they were used. And we really think that that gravitated a lot of support. We think that the patrons even from Wichita saw what we were doing, and they came up and played us. And we were able, we got unique, and we set up food outside, and we were still able to provide food. And of course, you know, the hospitality and the food space got really impacted with what happened with COVID. But we figured it out, and these guys did a remarkable job. So, next slide please. So there's the results. I mean, you know, at the end of the year, we, for EBITDA goal, we actually exceeded by 400%, and in 2019's performance by 170%. I'm proud to say I didn't bring any of our brass here, but Kemper Sports recognized Sand Creek Station with the highest net promoter score. It is something we've won in the past, and you know, approximately 100 properties, you know, you're looking at the facility that had the highest. And what a net promoter score is basically customer satisfaction, you know, and that's not, we have no control over that. It's sent out in an email to the customer when they play golf. They have full autonomy to fill it out themselves. It's a simple grading matrix. It's on a 100-point scale, but we finished with a 94.8, so we were, you know, more than thrilled under the COVID measures to receive, you know, that kind of positive outcome. Rounds increased to 38%, you know, we hit 35,000 rounds, but the weather was also fantastic in 2020. I mean, we compare in playable days 2020 and 2019. Fortunately, the weather was near perfect for 2020, which allowed us to have more playable days. You know, it's not like we had 35,000 rounds crammed into the same inventory of playable days as we had in 2019. So, and then, you know, it was really neat to have the women's state amateur, the youngest player ever in the history, won at 16-years-old, won the women's state amateur on the 18th hole, which was really exciting. And then Sam Stevens, it's kind of interesting because Kate and Sam are cousins, and Sam wins the first all-professional tournament hosted at Sand Creek Station. They both sank about a 15-foot putt, and I had to give Sam grief because I said, you know, your cousin's putt was harder because it was left to right, yours was straight up the hill. And he's like, that sounds about right. But it was really fun, it was a lot of historical occurrences that happened at the golf course. And then looking ahead, you know, Zach's already talked a little bit about PGA Junior League. We have a slate of competitions returning. The South Central PGA Senior Championship will visit us, the Women's Mid-Amateur, Kansas Boys 5A State Championship, the PGA Junior League, as, again, Zach really deserves fantastic credit for that. And then the future bookings are just looking great. I think, you know, confidence is back, we want to play golf, you know, the vaccines are rolling out. You all know what happened yesterday with the CDC saying if you got two, if you got your shots, you can walk around, you know, without your face covering, provided you're around someone that's had their vaccinations as well. So, next slide please, I'll try to move through this as quick as I can. So, you know, we know, and we've talked to all of you very closely as far as, you know, once the golf course, you know, and the debt is retired, and, you know, we certainly think that we can start leveraging our strategic planning. And then, you know, I love what Mr. Lesnick, the chairman of Kemper Sports says, is what are we talking about? And I know I've talked to Leroy about this, and I keep telling him not to bring him on my, on his scramble team because I don't help him, but he still asks me to play in his, the Rotary Club tournament, and we have great conversation. And one of the, one of the topics I love to talk to Leroy about is, you know, what are we thinking about 20 years from now at Sand Creek Station? It's not just what we're doing today, it's what we're doing with many years to come. And then, you know, I think we also need to work closer with our civic groups, and that's going to be, going to move right in, and I got done right at 5:10, so there's my, there's my, I didn't script it or practice, I winged it, so it all worked out perfect. Yeah, don't ask me to do that again. But, so, you know, I asked Corey Novoscone, who is the program director of the First Tee of Wichita, I thought maybe it would be better to come another night where he could possibly give a little bit more of a formal presentation on what First Tee is all about. So what I'm here is just to talk to you all and share with you some exciting news. First Tee of Wichita, I had a conversation two years ago, and Zach was actually, it was a two or three years ago, it might have been three. But we started a conversation with Tom West, who's the president, the board of the First Tee of Wichita. I was a charter board member in New Orleans with First Tee, so I know what it's all about, and it does work. It's a great community outreach initiative, and it basically, long story short, it's to expose kids that may not have the opportunity to play the game of golf, and it gives them a way to do it. It's really affordable, and my goal is to bring the First Tee, you know, here to Newton. And we're already in the process of trying to raise money. We want to host anywhere between 30 and 50 kids, we think this year it's going to be a summer program, and we don't want them to pay a nickel. Usually there's a cost of about $30, and really I, my goal is to get these kids, and I want to find kids, and we can't turn away anybody, but I would love to have kids that really would never have the opportunity to ever learn how to play the game of golf. What's more important about First Tee is First Tee really focuses on life skills. There's nine fundamentals, and that's really what the curriculum, you know, covers. And the nine core values, which I think we all can certainly gravitate to and try to practice every day, is honesty, integrity, sportsmanship, respect, confidence, responsibility, perseverance, courtesy, judgment. And I think judgment meaning on yourself. So, you know, it's really exciting, I've known Corey, I've known Alan, I've known Tom, they're the team that worked down in Wichita, they've grown it to almost 1,000 kids, and nothing would thrill me more than to see, you know, First Tee really become a major hub in Newton. And maybe we were able to, at one point, branch away from Wichita, which I don't think they would have any issues whatsoever. To run your own First Tee official program, you know, there are some pretty in-depth steps, and I like that about the program because it's not one of these that you just take, hey, read the manual, and now you're a charter, you know, now you have an official chapter. It's, you have to go through a very lengthy process. So, and that's why they're successful, and that's why that they, when they do establish a chapter, most of the time it works. So, tried to run through that as quick as I can. I stand for any questions, if anybody would like to ask anything regarding the 2020 review or First Tee.
How long, First Tee, how long does it last? Like, I was writing, and I may have missed it.
Sure. It's a good question. So really, in that in itself, you know, the First Tee's, the schedule, the agenda, it's really up to each host site. You know, for our goal is, we were thinking to start, and we want to take this in steps and run a successful program, we're thinking about eight to nine weeks, and we're thinking once a week, and it'll last about two hours. We're thinking Tuesdays would work really well, and we're going to reach out to, thinking the YMCA, maybe Big Brothers, Big Sisters, a couple of the other local civic groups, so.
Multiple cycles throughout the year or a summer program?
So, we're going to do, we're going to start off with the summer program, you know, we want to, again, we want to make sure that we put our best foot forward, you know, because I think it's going to be a win-win. We want the kids to, you know, the biggest ambassadors are going to be the kids, when they go to schools, or when they run home to mom and they're going, this is awesome, I want to play golf. You know, so we want to hit it out the park with the summer program. We want to get there though, Mayor, we want to get there where maybe we're running multiple, you know, schedules throughout the year. And it would really thrill me because, you know, that's as a PGA golf professional and as Zach is a PGA golf professional, it's our jobs to try to grow the game. And, you know, we think that there's a lot of audiences that get overlooked, and we think this is a great platform where we can kind of work our way into, you know, a new audience that may start getting kids that may have never thought about playing golf, and who knows, they may take it as a career, they might find kids that want to work there. So, because there's a lot of opportunities, you know, once you get a program like this off the ground and run it.
That's exciting.
It is exciting.
Would this replace your junior golf?
It will not, no. We want, we want to continue to run our junior golf program, and what we might find is if the First Tee really is working, and the kids want to gravitate to First Tee, then it may just combine. And we still want to run the PGA Junior League, we think we'd like to find a way that First Tee kind of, again, it's an introductory program, get some kind of hitting balls on the range, and if they really drink the Kool-Aid and start playing a lot of golf, PGA Junior League kind of takes it to the next level and puts it in a competitive space.
First Tee is kids-only?
It is. But, we are going to launch, and it's something I didn't talk about, is we have a ladies' league. Donna, did you win last year?
I did not win.
She did not win, but she participated. But we're going to also add a couples' league on Sunday afternoons, and we're going to do some beginner clinics this spring.
Beginner clinics, yeah.
I'll be there. Zach's teaching me, I'm in the beginner clinic because my game has gone way south. Any other questions?
I would say this is one example where drinking the Kool-Aid is not a negative connotation for the kids.
Probably should have used different words. Thank you Leroy for correcting me, sometimes I get a little tongue-twisted. No, we're excited about this year, and next year even looks better. So, thank you very much. Certainly Newton's been a wonderful partner for our company. You go to the front page of Kemper Sports, you'll see Sand Creek Station is one of the case studies. So our company really uses this example. And I'm not just saying this, it's to the credit of the way that staff and the commission and the whole community supports us. So, certainly takes everybody, and this is, I think this is an epitome of a successful story.
Well done.
Thank you.
Is this Zach responsible for the salsa?
He is, he worked all day.
Oh my.
So, trying to help him.
That's very good, very good. Thank you.
Well, thank you all, I know you have a heavy night, and really appreciate your time, and as always, I'm there if anybody needs anything, and it really is a fantastic project to be a part of. You all have a good rest of your evening. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks Zach.
Donna?
Yes, somebody's having a coffee, stay in here. I'm looking. You haven't started yet.
We haven't started yet.
Okay. I do have access if anybody else really wants to look at that one. I'm going to go through here pretty fast, and you can look them over, and then we can talk later at a different date if we don't make it through. This is just telling you, overall, we had over $39 million of revenue come in, the city in 2020, and this is the different areas that it came in, we had taxes 34%, fines and other revenue were 3%. It just kind of gives you an idea of what comes in, the city. And the next one is the expenditures that go out. That was $39,229,000. So we did spend $134,000 more than revenue we took in, but that is not much for 39 million dollars. So we did good. And you can see where it kind of goes out, we have salaries and benefits together is 38%, which is not bad for payroll and benefits for an organization our size. Commodities are 4%, debt service is 16%, it just kind of gives you an idea overall. Next is the general fund, and we did very well for the year we had. We did go a negative $389,000, but you'll see we're still 21% of our reserve that we need to be, which puts us in a wonderful spot for 2021 this year. So it gets us where we needed to be. We had, we lost about $200,000 in interest, about $100,000 in franchise fees, $100,000 in ambulance fees, and about $100,000 in court fees. So it's about $500,000, but we did get about $223,000 more in sales tax between the two sales tax we have. And then our licenses and our permits came in at $42,000 more dollars than we thought we would. So really, we, because of COVID, we lost about $244,000. And this just, the next slide just kind of shows you what all comes in, the revenue for the general fund taxes are 69%, fines and forfeitures are 1.8%, you know, just kind of lets you know what comes in. The next slide is just a little, shows you kind of what we did the last few years. Property tax, we're down because we, remember, we sent 5.7 mils to the bonded interest fund from general. So that's, 2020 showed that the first time. Vehicle tax is about the same, sales tax. I was surprised on vehicle tax, I thought a lot more of that would go to bond and interest because the property tax went over there, but it stayed about the same. So we did pretty good. Our expenditures, you can see our safety, it takes a lot of our money to cover those departments, as it should be. Our information technology is like 3%, streets are 11%, administrative 16%. So it kind of gives you an idea where the money goes. The next one is just kind of a fund balance over the last four years, and it shows you, the little red line is there for our requirement, which our policy is 15% to have a reserve balance of. So it kind of shows you where we are, we're doing very well. The last few years we went up, and this is just, just to go down that much, I think we did very well for 2020. The next one is the wastewater fund. We lost about $237,000 in the wastewater fund, but if you look at our budget, if all, we do budget in utility funds for contingencies, because we need to have it there if we need to spend it. And it doesn't, like contingency in the general fund, you don't want to budget property tax monies for that because you're taking that out of people for contingencies. But you need to have contingencies in your utility funds. So if everything, the worst would have happened in 2020, we could have been $1,002,000 in the red, but that didn't happen. We ended up really good, we're at 31% balance, percentages of our expenditures. And you'll notice the personal services, and this is something you're going to see in each one of the utilities, we're 149% over a budget. But if you remember, we changed the way we were reporting our salaries. We just took it out at the percentage where everyone actually came out of. Like I'm spread over a lot of the departments in general and the three utilities, because I do a lot of work in each of those. So we took it out of each one where it was budgeted for just to be transfers, but we thought it was cleaner due to this way. And it balanced out, it didn't hurt anything, because it was down in the transfers before. So if, in case you see that and wonder, that's what that was. Our wastewater revenue is staying pretty well, pretty consistent, it's a little above where we were in 2018, so there's nothing relative to report there. Our plant upgrade fee is staying about $1.8 million a year, which pays our debt service for the plant upgrade. And then you can see our fund balance for wastewater, we've stayed pretty consistent where we need to be, and we only have to have a 5% reserve in our utilities. So that's why the red line is down there at the bottom. On the water fund, you'll see we almost just about broke even on water. We're at $91,500 negative. So that is just pretty good for what we brought in and what we spent. I don't know if we can do much better than that. That means we're not making too much money off, you know, our rates aren't too high, but they're where they should be to cover what we've got going right now. And I want to tell you something else when I get there here. Water revenue stayed about the same as 2018, again, like sewer. And our fund balance, this looks a little different because we started in 17 at 2.9, and we're down to 2.1. But if you remember, we transferred to maintain our debt coverage ratio of 1.75% for all our loans we have, we didn't have anything in our water debt service reserve. So I transferred between two years, $500,000 to that fund to cover that. So it, we still have it in the water, it just brought this one down. That way we know we can't spend it, no use having it in this fund. Sanitation fund is next, and we did well in the sanitation fund also. Same thing with the salaries there, they were 134 over budget, but it balances out. I always say sanitation is my favorite fund. The revenue came in pretty close to last year, about $83,000 more. Our fund balance, as you can see, they don't have as many expenditures, so their 5% reserve is pretty low, it's $77,000, somewhere in there. Next, we'll move to the airport. You can see they had a pretty good year, they had $24,950 profit, which helped step up their cash balance, and it's about 11%, and they only have to have a 5% also reserve. They did get $69,000 in a CARES grant, so that, for operational purposes, so that helped out this year. If you'll look at the airport fuel sales, they were pretty low this year, but again, it's 2020. So what we might have to be doing is looking at, bringing that for our budget in 2022, bringing that down a little bit because we're not meeting our budget, and we want to be more proactive where we think we're going to be. And Brian will kind of tell us where he thinks that might be in the next few years, so we can kind of come down on that. Our airport leases have been going up, and that's good because that's more regular income than fuel, so that's a good thing. Airport fund balance, we just are staying pretty good where we need to be with them. And the golf course, like Chris said, we had a great year, and ended up with $152,000 to the good, and that was mainly in your course and grounds. If you go to the next page, you'll see your course and grounds, look how that shot up for 2020. And carts were up a little bit, food and beverage went down just a little bit, but they did overcome that, like you said, with the outdoor service. So they had a really good year. And you can tell it by the shot right here, this is their fund balance, and how good that looks now. Because sometimes they've been a little bit below that reserve we have to have, but they're really making it good. Meridian Center, it's not quite so happy a story, but they did everything they could to maintain the business out there, and they did get a $20,000 grant from the CARES at the very end of the year to help them with that. So that did help a lot. And they're ending the year with a balance of $55,000 cash. And you can see in the next slide that the food and beverage, how far down that went, room service fees also, and then other, which is a little bit extra coming in. Their fund balance, you can see is maintaining, it's came back up. If you'll see on the, well, I'll go, no, that's my last one. If you'll go back to the Meridian Fund summary, you'll see that they lost $20,000, but their cash went up. And that is because of the balance sheet accounts where we had a bunch of money come in accounts receivable at the end of 19, but it wasn't in our cash, but it came in in '20, so the cash is higher than it was. I just wanted to let you know that I know that, it's not a mistake, but that's why. And we can have questions later, I think I have two minutes. That was fast.
Thanks for that crash course, Donna.
I like the way you laid it out.
Right.
It's right down there.
Exactly.
Well, it certainly gives us more options though, and we have a $4 million ending cash balance.
Yes.
That's a very positive thing for us to make decisions going forward with.
Any other questions for Donna? Very good. Mr. Pollard?
Good evening Commissioners, I think Donna covered it. Any questions? You guys see me up here about five, six times a year, so this won't be a shock to you, but I did want to kind of wrap things up a little bit. As Donna indicated, we did end the year with a, our revenue exceeding our expenditures by a little over $24,000, so that was good, considering that we saw a drop of 41, 41.5% fuel sales compared to the five-year average. So that was not insignificant for the year. Second quarter was down 57% compared to the five-year average, so that was, and of course, we saw air traffic down 96% nationwide during that period of time, so the fact that we were only down 54% was pretty good. The one thing I will point out though, is if we start comparing it, we did actually see a decline of our revenue in 2019, our fuel revenue in 2019. And if you compare second or a fourth quarter of 2019 to the fourth quarter of 2020, we're actually up 13% in 2020 compared to 2019. So we're trending in the right direction, and it looks like first quarter of this year is also trending very well in that direction for fuel sales. Now, we're very fortunate that we've kind of made the shift over the last couple of years to go away from just relying on fuel sales to provide revenue for the airport. We're starting to get our lease rates in order, we're starting to see some of that revenue flow in, it's probably an over-exaggeration, but we're seeing it get better as times going on, and we're starting to price our land, we're starting to price our buildings at a fair market value, and so as we get closer to that, we'll generate better revenue for the airport. Taxway E, so let's, that was the bad news, let's say, we'll call that the bad news for the year. Taxway E, as you are aware, we received a federal grant for that. We began the design phase in 2020, we completed the design phase in 2020. We also completed the bids in December, we sent out the bids for construction, and those were awarded, and so we're ready to roll. And in fact, we got our go-ahead from the FAA about two weeks ago now, I think, so we're good to go, we're hoping to break ground probably late April, so I think that's when we're anticipating. Don Linger was the, was the construction, was the general contractor who was awarded that. We also did receive $45,000 from the CARES Act for the local match for our design program, so we did not actually end up paying any So we did not actually end up paying any dollars for the design program, which is normally 10%, but that was included in some of our CARES money. That was included in the CARES Act. That was in addition to the $69,000 that Donna already mentioned. Runway 17, the PAPI, we talked about this, Precision Approach Path Indicator. It's been out of service for quite some time. We received a KDA grant to have that replaced. We also were able to do the design phase and bid award construction bids for that. It's also Don Linger. Another with the Taxway Echo project because there are runway closures that are going to be required, and we'd like to do everything. We don't like to close the runway once, not two, three, four times to accommodate both things. So we were able to package that together, so that worked out very well for us. Okay, so let's talk about businesses. So we did lose a business out at the airport. Enterprise Rental Car left the airport in 2020. They went through quite a bit of consolidation as a corporation, and a lot of their satellite offices were closed. But with every door closes, a new opportunity opens. I think there's a saying about that. And we were able to get, Horizon Aviation came in as a new company, so they immediately leased out the space that, that Enterprise left, as well as new space in Hangar A. And they are helping with renovations on our 70-year-old hangar. So that's, and that's ongoing, so that's great. And they're, part of their sales, fuel sales that are trending up is because of them. They're flying a lot. I mean, I, I haven't seen one company use one airplane so many times in my, in my career. So, and once they get three or four, it, sky's the limit, literally sky's the limit at that point. So it's, it's good to see their business thriving, so. We had a tough year. You know, everybody had a tough year, but in comparison, we've got, all of our tenants out there were deemed essential, and none of them furloughed, none of them laid off, none of them left, none of them went out of business. They hired people throughout the year. So that, we are very fortunate to have the tenants that we do out there. They have endured long-term heartaches over the years. They have managed downturns in the economy. They have managed it all. So we're very fortunate to have the tenants that we do out there. And hopefully, as we vet new tenants, we'll get them going, and they'll be long-term tenants for us as well. We did lose a 33-year employee hired in September, so that was a shock to the airport. But we did hire a new employee, Anthony, and he is so far, he's been fantastic. So we haven't run him off yet, so he's five months in, so he seems to be pretty happy with the airport. So that's, that's been, but we were trending, like I said, we're trending in the right direction, which is all we can really ask for at this time. I will stand for questions.
Did AppGas, how much did it go down when regular fuel, does it follow like unleaded on price?
Yes, and it did go down over last year, although we've just seen a significant spike.
Yeah.
We just raised our prices for the first time in 12 months on jet fuel. Jet fuel went up almost 50 cents a gallon since we set the price last year.
So were gallon sales not down as much as, if you look at the number of gallons sold? Sales were down largely in part the fact that, that gas price was down?
No, I, well, the statistics I gave you are based on gallons, not, not dollars. So, yeah, so I base that on gallons because that gives me a better idea, because the price does fluctuate, so it gives me a better idea as far as with gallonage versus dollars.
Do you try to mark it up X number of cents a gallon, or do you mark it up a percentage?
Uh, no, we, we mark it up, we have a specific rate that we set that, so whatever we pay for, we add our, our rate to it, and that's what we add. And then that's across the, that's across the board. We have a business price, and then we also have a retail price. And we try to keep that price relatively competitive with our competitive, you know, our region, you know? We're not the lowest in the region, but we're certainly not the highest in the region, so. And we compete against self-fuel operations, self-service operations, which is, you know, all of our, all of our fuel is provided by a person, you know? So we're eyes on every airplane. We think from a security, safety standpoint, that's good for us. It's good for the airports, good for the area, you know, for those airports that are non-towered, self-serve. A lot of nefarious activity tends to happen in those places, and we, we don't have that problem here because of it.
What is your thinking on '21 here as far as fuel sales? You think it'll project upwards 20%, 30% of, year-over-year?
Do I think it'll go up year-over-year? I don't. I think we'll see maybe 2% to 3%, 4%. I think it'll be small, small percentage of growth, if we see growth at all, just because the airplanes are getting more efficient, the number of airplanes flying. Now, obviously, when years that we have heavy rains, we need agricultural sprayers, they'll come in. Years that some of our tenants are testing airplanes, we've got, one of our tenants right now is, is testing a big airplane, so they're using a lot of fuel, but that could end tomorrow. Whenever their contract is up, that could end. So we don't ever want to, we want, we don't ever want to be back in the position where we have to depend on fuel sales to make ends meet at the airport. And that's the way we're working away from. We're, you know, if fuel sales are great, we need that, and that's supportive for the airport, but we want that to be additional, not necessarily our livelihood. Economic development out there is huge, and it's important, and it's, it's, it's one of the things that sets us apart from a lot of our counterparts in the region, is that we do have 20 businesses out there. We do have a lot of hangars that we own, we have buildings that we maintain, and we lease out, we have land to lease out, and we're attracting people to come here. And so that's what sets us apart from other places, and that helps us with our, with our revenue, of course, as well. And obviously, tax collections and stuff like that for the local community.
You do a great job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Well, moving right along. Look at that. Library Board, Carrie Cusick.
Yeah. Very short.
You can angle that down.
Thank you.
Ms. Adrian.
All right. Good evening. I am Dr. Carrie Cusick, and I'm supposed to be the new director of the New Public Library as of December 28th. And, and Adrian, our board president, and Kathy Anderson, our board member, have passed out some packets that we prepared for you. So inside your packet, the first sheet is kind of a year-at-a-glance sheet, and it just has a lot of general information about the library. And then the rest of the packet is the more in-depth annual report with statistics and financial information, as well as information about our programs. Obviously, I wasn't here for most of 2020, so a lot of this information was compiled by our staff. And I just want to say they've done a fabulous job of adapting to the realities of the COVID pandemic. Because COVID is kind of the shaping force of our service right now, I want to talk kind of relation to continuity of service and then some of the adaptations that we've made. So first off, as far as continuity of service, even though the library was closed for a few months because of the stay-at-home orders and COVID concerns, we still circulated more than 110,000 items, and patrons walked through our door more than 20,000 times during that year. We're very proud of the fact that we were able to continue the in-light service. Because of COVID, we have not been able to fill the aid position that usually does that, so our staff has taken that on. But, you know, in a year where particularly our older populations have lost a lot of their connections to the outside world, we're very glad that we were able to offer that service, which delivers books, large print mainly, to homebound residents and residents of our long-term care facilities in the area. Technology, the library's a technology access point continues to be critical. We check out mobile hotspots that patrons can take home, and every one of them has a long waitlist on it. And we were very happy when we could open back up and provide computer access, because when that is not available, people notice, because so many government services require an internet connection. Like right now, we're in tax season, and for people who don't have internet or computer, we're the place that they can come, and they can find their documents and print their documents. VITA Tax Service is currently operating and was able to operate last year. We've distributed, I think, around 350 packets, so people who need help at no charge to them to get their taxes prepared could come to the library, and those are prepared by volunteers. So that will run through mid-April. So we're glad that even with all of the things going on, that we can still provide a lot of these critical services. Staff has also done a lot of adapting. You can see from the year-end review, we had almost 400 programs, and most of those are virtual right now. We've had participants or viewership of over 20,000 people. And what's interesting is even when we move back to in-person programming, we intend to keep that virtual component as much as possible, because we're seeing people are literally watching these programs from all over the country. We've had Spanish storytimes that we couldn't offer before, and people will comment, and they might be in Texas, or, you know, we have a Flint Hills program, and a person from Oregon is like, thank you that I can access this online. So that's been a fun adaptation for us to make this year. We are increasing our focus and spending on electronic collections. Our downloadable eBooks and audiobooks saw a 48% increase in 2020 over 2019. That's not surprising. These are materials that are available to patrons to download from home in a safe and convenient manner. And so we are directing a few of our traditional print funds towards those materials, so that's a change for us. We're also just trying a lot of new things. Because we can't do in-person children's program, we have provided activity bags, and we've distributed thousands of those that people can come in and pick up to provide at-home enrichment activities. We just added a new circulating board game collection because people are at home, and we want them to have safe activities that they can engage in at home. And then once we are open, we can translate that into in-person programming as well. And that was actually funded by a grant from the South Central Kansas Library System, that new collection. So that's not an exhaustive list of all of the things that have changed, but kind of where our focus is in the next few months is kind of two things. One is reopening. Right now, we have limited services. Our main level is open, but our shelves are not open for browsing. We have a limited number of computers available, and our children's level is completely unavailable. We are hoping, as we see the vaccine roll out, that by summer, we, early summer, the upper level can be open completely again, that we can add in more computers back. And we just got word that we got a grant that will hopefully help pay for some Plexiglas dividers for more of our computers to make more stations available. Children, because children cannot be vaccinated, they're obviously a huge part of our summer users. We have a lot of questions about what we can do. We are going to do outdoor programs, storytimes, and movie nights, but whether or not we can fully open the children's area back up in the near future is still a big question mark, and we're just going to go with the best scientific evidence and local health guidance as we move forward on those decisions. So reopening is obviously our big next step. And because COVID has kind of disrupted our lives and our habits, we want to spend a lot of energy kind of remarketing ourselves to the community. And so some of the things that we're going to do, we are hosting our first-ever pop-up library at Moto's Coffee Shop on April 10th as part of National Library Week to get our services out in front of college students and other residents of North Newton. We are hosting a used book sale on March 20th in conjunction with the Chambers spring into promotion savings, because we really want to utilize partnerships as much as we possibly can. There's a local business, Salted Creamery. We are working with them to develop a library-themed ice cream called Bookworm that will be available this summer to help hopefully generate some funds for the library, as well as just be a fun marketing tool for both the local business and for us. And we have recently partnered with Kaufman Museum, and we have installed a book walk. The first one went up in January, and staff just changed the second story out last week, which is a really fun, outdoor, safe activity that, again, we can kind of put ourselves back in front of the community and back in the minds of our users, even when some of our in-house services are limited. That's my main points, if you have any questions. And I did want to also note that I put my name and email and phone number, so since I'm new, if you ever want to call or email, I'd be happy to get to know you and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much.
This infographic is fantastic. This is so helpful. Because when people come here and ask for, and make one, the library, this one, or whatever, anything we can give them, this is amazing. Thank you very much.
Yes, and we, after tonight, these will be available publicly in the library, too. So, yes.
Thank you so much. Very good. Pam?
Good evening, commissioners and staff. It's our pleasure to be here today to tell you all the great things that we've been doing over the past year. Of course, it's not been the normal year, especially when you do events. So we started out the year great. If you look on your sheet, we started out in February with love to shop local. It was a promotion that we did. We had 19 businesses participate, and we had nine, or, and 909, 920 participating shoppers. So a lot of people were out really embracing the businesses after the holiday, which that's kind of really what we tried to do in February. Then of course, COVID hit, and then August changed a little bit. Usually, we do our Main Street Mania in June, so we kind of moved it to August, and we did summer sales. We had less businesses participating just due to COVID. We had 10 participating businesses with about 250 participating shoppers. And one of the things that we did that was new this year, we did bags, and it said, "Dine, shop, and enjoy Newton." And so during the summer, they got these bags, and they had all kinds of coupons that you could use to go to the different businesses. So this was something new that we had never tried before. So it was kind of fun to see these bags all over town. And then it came time for Taste of Christmas, and we tried to do it a little different this year. Usually, we do it a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and since there was, COVID was going on, we spread it over two weekends. So we did it a weekend before, and then all week, and the next weekend, and we had 22 participating businesses take part in it, and we had only 38 completed passports. But we gave out a lot of bags. And again, we did the bags, and it said, "Thank you for supporting local." So we did these bags again, and they got to take them around because we had to do different. Usually, it's Taste of Christmas in our businesses. If you've not been downtown, they have all kinds of goodies in their stores. If you've not been to Marshalls, you need to go to Marshalls this next year. But they got these bags, and a lot of people did goodies that were kind of already sealed in baggies, so people got these bags to be able to put all their goodies in as they went around to the different businesses. So we continued to do that. We also did Small Business Saturday and promoted that locally through Facebook and ads. And then, since we couldn't do two of our main events that we love to do, which is College Night and Taste of Newton, which we, we hope that we can maybe do that in the spring, but as it looks like we're still at a 50 limit, that I just don't think that Taste of Newton could probably happen this year. But hopefully, it's early this next year, so it will be in September 30th. So it would be too close probably to do two of them back-to-back. So we added a new thing downtown this year, and it was called Deck Downtown. And we had 14 businesses participate. We had over 226 voters that went online and voted for their favorite storefront downtown, and it was, there was a lot of competition. And it was kind of fun to see everybody out voting. I know Parca won. They were the number one. Theirs was on Christmas Story. So it was lots of fun that even service people got involved in this. I know Clint also had a wonderful storefront downtown, so, did you win?
Second.
Second. You were second. And I think Bellaville was third, I think.
By one vote.
I won one vote.
One vote, that's all.
So created a lot of competition, so I think we can hopefully continue that. That was what we were trying to create, an environment that you could drive downtown and see these wonderful storefronts, since we were all kind of social distancing. But since we didn't do two of our main events, it didn't mean that we didn't find other things to do. And I know that was a big concern when you don't do two events, oh, we'll just take it easy. We didn't. We got busy with different things. At the very beginning of COVID, I was invited to be part of the ESF14 group that was under the command at the Harvey County. We met two times a week to start out, and then once a week, trying to provide resources. We also did a survey for businesses, trying to figure out, okay, what are their needs, and how can we better address those? And then one of the things we did was support our Harvey County businesses downtown, and Newton now asked businesses to donate $25 or whatever you could donate a month to help cover the cost of ads for some of our retailers. So the Chamber jumped on that and have done that the past year. We also, during COVID, which is amazing, had three ribbon cuttings downtown. We had Del Ponte Cafe, Sand Creek Nutrition, and Newton Furniture and Cabinets. So it was kind of exciting that we still had a lot of things going on, even though it was COVID. We also worked with Network Kansas. We were part of a group, and I just want to share some of this great stuff. Evergy donated some money to- EverG donated some money to Network Kansas, and there were several of us communities that got more money than others. They donated $100,000 to Network Kansas to do a restart loan. And only three counties, only, I think there's one, two, there's four counties that got the bulk of it. Four counties got $60,000 to loan out. Well, the rest, 19 communities, only got $40,000. So if you ever see EverG, thank them for giving Newton one of those. Reno County, Harvey County, El Dorado, and Cali County got $60,000. So we were able to do three $5,000 loans for our business community. One was in downtown Newton, one was in North Newton, and then one was in Heston. So these loans were really pretty wonderful. They were $5,000 each. We split them up so we could do more. They didn't have to match it. It was a 2% interest rate, 48-month term, and four months of that was deferred. So it really helped our businesses that were needing a little extra during that time kind of get started. So once those loans are paid off, I've been told by our consultant that that $15,000 will stay in our community. I don't know if EverG will do something different once that money is repaid, but that will be able to stay in our community, plus that 2% interest that we're collecting. So thank you to EverG that we were one of those select groups that got that. So that was wonderful. We have not been able to do any other really loans because, at this point, most businesses are looking for grants, not really loans to expand. But we hope this next year will be different. We worked with our state and county CARES Act coordinator. We did a lot of meeting one-on-one with businesses, really pushing them to apply for the CARES Act. And we were lucky in our county that they did set money aside for our business community, and a lot of them really did take advantage of it. We coordinated informational Zoom meetings to help businesses deal with COVID. If that hurt, hit their business, what did they do? What were the protocol to follow? So that's been great. One of the other things, too, we embarked on was KWCH Hometown Pride program that they did. We have 12 participants, 18 are downtown businesses. The Chamber has one as well. So every quarter, we are paying money to get information out about our events that we're having downtown. So I think probably you've seen some of those commercials that have been on Channel 12. And then, also, our merge, used to be the Newton Young Professionals Group, helped work and clean up downtown with the weeds, because that's still a thorn in my side when I see weeds downtown. I continue to work with businesses that aren't here locally to make them know that their sidewalks aren't looking well. I've worked with AT&amp;T quite often to send them pictures of how bad the weeds get over there time to time, but the merge group worked downtown and helped clean up the sidewalks. Another thing we came up with, too, was Think Local t-shirts. And I think most of the commissions, I think Leroy and Kathy don't have one. We're going to have to make sure you get one tonight. But we came up with Think Local, Dine, Shop, and Enjoy Newton. And so we, the money that we got from that, which we had a donation that came from, I can't think, Harvey County Economic Development, gave us one of their credits that they had. And so we then put more money to it, did these t-shirts, and all the proceeds go to buying gift certificates at our restaurants. So we're just getting ready to get those out so that we could donate. We've decided we're going to give it to some of our first responders. We're going to give some to the police department, the fire department, and the hospital, and then give some away to some of our local residents as well. So we're in the process of doing that right now. We also have worked with our downtown to give them hand sanitizer and face masks. We learned that that is something they needed, and Harvey County gave us the hand sanitizer. So if you still need that, I got boxes of it in my office, so you're welcome to have it. You just can't sell it. So come get it. And then we got face masks from Newton Medical Center that they donated to hand out to, to our businesses, so they didn't incur that cost. And then, we also did work with the Kansas Leadership Center to do Kansas Beats the Virus. And it was doing some quick meetings. It was like a quick month turnaround, and we put together groups that would meet with a facilitator, and it was an hour-long process. And we paid some of these businesses that were nonprofits a $500 honorarium, so it helped our local businesses. We also made some money on that as well for our leadership program. So we did that in the month of December, so we've been very busy. But we're sad we couldn't do Taste of Newton, but...
We all are sad that we couldn't do that.
But we're hoping to be back. Any questions about things we've been doing? It's been a different year. It's a year of changing what you normally do and trying to really work with your businesses. As you know, this year, as it's gone on into 2021, we're doing digital marketing series. We're doing all kinds of things to help our businesses, because if you don't have a digital presence on the internet, you're missing out. And I hope you'll tune in this month. We're going to have, Tina is going to speak from Kitchen Corner on Main Street, and what they have done, it's been amazing to hear their story of how they transformed themselves during COVID. So she's going to be on and talk at our breakfast about what, how they came about what they do. And if you haven't been on Facebook, on a lot of evenings, they're always on selling their product, and it's crazy how well they've done. So it's, the downtown people have really been resilient.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Excellent.
Rich, do you need a refill?
Excellent.
Just bring it up.
Hey, if you have a large, I can wear a large, too.
Show.
All right.
I know.
They're a little tight. It's okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sure.
Great. Oh, we're missing someone. I know. It's not going to be boring. Come back. I know I don't have the infographics the library did, but...
Coffee and cookies takes priority. You're on.
Okay. Well, thank you. First of all, I just wanted to go through our normal activities, and then I'll talk about the COVID activities that kind of hijacked some of our time this year. One of our biggest priorities is always business retention and attraction. And so that, in 2020, was huge. We had 26 RFPs. So far, year-to-date, we've had 11, so the activity is still strong. Last March, you know, we didn't know what would happen. We thought activity would really drop off. We'd be doing some other things, but that didn't happen. The activity continued, and then it was more in-depth. So we get RFPs, requests for proposals. They were already pretty in-depth. I've talked to you guys about that before. Now, they're on steroids because I think they don't want to come visit as many places, so they want to ask you as much information beforehand. So what I already thought was a complicated document, they've really increased that. So they're very cumbersome, but it's great that we're continuing to see that interest. From those, if we break them down, 56% were advanced manufacturing, which manufacturing's our bread and butter here. Food production, ag, we saw a lot of. Aviation, warehouse distribution, and then some professional and data center-type projects. From that, we had eight site visits, and then we had three local expansions in Harvey County. Bunting, which you guys are familiar with, Midwest Transformers, and then Leg in Halsted expanded with a significant project, too. So in the uncertainty, we didn't have any new companies locate here last year, but we did have some activity, and we're glad that all the companies that were here are still in existence through what's been going on. Marketing is also a huge part of it. We want to go out and visit with site selectors, and there's so many different communities, we have to distinguish ourselves, so we need to sell our assets to them. Typically, that's going to different places and meeting with them in one-on-one settings. Those were changed with trade shows being virtual, allowing us to talk to people that way, and then some of our conferences. So I've listed the ones that we attended, which were the site selector events, which they were different. They had breakout rooms where you could still do one-on-one meetings, so still had that opportunity. And then the trade shows were a little different. Those were tough. Those were tough to be a part of, but still made the effort to make sure that Harvey County's name was out there. There are a lot of regional partnerships that we work with, and you guys have heard us talk about the talent initiative that we worked with the Greater Wichita Partnership on, the blueprint for regional economic growth. And then the state just rolled out last month their new incentive program, so we talked about that for a while, too, that their incentives have been the same incentives for the past 35 years. And so when they came out, Kansas was really competitive, and then as the years went on, we became less competitive compared to other states. And with our new Secretary of Commerce, Lieutenant Governor, they're really making an effort to make us more competitive again with those. So that's promising, and they've fully staffed the Department of Commerce again, which really helps us because we have more reps out there. And you can see on our project tracker, which we give our board, we put where the lead has come from. If you look at, you know, the previous three years, the leads had to come from Wichita or from myself, direct contacts, and now we're really seeing so many of them are from the Department of Commerce, which is great. So those were our normal activities. Also, retention visits, those were a little bit different. Jennifer at our office, that's one of her main jobs, is to go out and do retention visits. She has a standardized questionnaire. She was able to get into some, but most of those were virtual retention visits as well. But so back in March, when everything started happening, the county reached out and said, "We need to form this emergency task force." And so, as Pam mentioned, for about three months, it was myself, Pam, Jennifer, Commissioner Kane, and then Melody was on the group as well, and then Megan with the Heston Chamber. And really, it just is a new environment for everyone, but how can we support our business through this? And came up with different areas where we could assess our major industries and identify, you know, what potential pains they might have, how we can help ease those. I've kind of listed for you there some of the things we tried to help and assist with. So right off the bat, we did a survey to kind of gauge where companies are at, how they're feeling, and then try to respond to that. We also, as a group, tried to make sure that we could reach everyone. Some of the communities within Harvey County don't have chambers. They didn't have ways to get the information. So to make sure that Halsted, Sudwick, Walton, everyone got the information so that they could apply for the resources that were becoming available. So that was really time-consuming and pretty cumbersome, but we wanted to make sure that all the manufacturers and small business were in the loop. So after that, kind of, those rolled out, and people were able to access those funds, which was great and helped a lot of companies. Then the county was receiving the CARES money. And so the county created a seven-person task force committee to oversee that almost $7 million that they received. And so it was broken up into different sectors, and then Barbara Lee, she represented nonprofit. Ben Proctor represented education. Matthew Schmidt represented healthcare. Ethan Reimer from Halsted represented the cities in Harvey County. And then I represented business and industry, and then Anthony and Dan with the county. So that was a huge task as well. We did a needs assessment that went out together, what the need is, and that came back huge. You know, first when we found out we were getting the $7 million, I thought, "There's no way we can spend $7 million." And then this came back, and I thought, "Oh, how are we going to figure out who doesn't get..." So it was really lots of days spent in the basement of the county trying to advocate for your sector, why they should receive funds. So we divided that into seven different areas where we allocated money to each different set, and then we worked with the Central Kansas, Central Kansas Community Foundation to help us administer or create the applications, help with the guidelines. So then, once we started in August, I'm sorry, in October, we started putting these out where people could then apply. Then you have the process of going through and making sure that everyone applied is falling within the guidelines of their program. So just several hours working with the county to make sure that these people were approved, and they would get the money, and that when they got audited, everyone was going to be at a good place. So that was all allocated. We ended up having about a million left that was not given to the businesses, and we are working on other ways that we can get that money out. And then we've been told that there might be another round coming. So for the business and industry side, they did receive some money in our initial $7 million, and then they also were able to apply through another state program. So they were pretty well-covered, and we could see that reflected in our manufacturers and their ability to stay open. So just did another survey since we're a year into this last month to talk to our manufacturers and see where they're at. So I just want to share with you quickly, you know, after 12 months, 100% of the manufacturers surveyed have experienced losses. Not a surprise there. They reported 86% of them said the losses were in supply chain distribution, which we knew that was going to be a problem. 71% said employee absenteeism, and then the third one was 60% said slower sales. We also heard a big issue for them was childcare, and so that's something that we're hoping to work with the city on, the community development director on addressing that need, because that will continue to go forward. We asked them what type of adjustments they made for COVID over the past year, teleworking, new vendors, and then modified shifts in hours where it was reported. We asked them how concerned they were about the impacts of COVID in the coming months, and the majority are more concerned one to six months out than they are six to 12 months out. So it's this next few months where they're still worried. None of the manufacturers reported that they were concerned that they would have to permanently close because of COVID, so that's wonderful. They did report revenue decline due to COVID. The average was between 10% to 40%. So they're still hanging on and still getting by. There are concerns that we're trying to help them with. There are other industries, other sectors with manufacturing that are doing extremely well right now, and so it's kind of a balance. But we've been very blessed, I think, in Harvey County with our diverse manufacturing base to kind of weather what's been happening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I really appreciate the latest survey results.
Yeah. We really have been in touch with them so much more, and so I was happy on this. We sent it out to 66, and we got about 40 back. So that's a really good percentage for a survey, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Chief. Good evening, sir.
My assistant Vanna is handing out the... This is a document that you have all seen already. I did want to run over it real quick with you as far as the inside cover and a couple of items that were not included in the annual report. On the inside cover, you can see our 2020 statistics. We did have a decrease in call volume in 2020 as compared to previous years, largely in part to people were afraid to call the ambulance in April, secondary to COVID. Our call volume was drastically reduced by almost 50% in April. To finish the numbers, we ended up with 18 less calls in 2020 than we did in 2019, so we by far made up the difference in the remaining months of the year. So people were afraid to call the ambulance, they were afraid to go seek healthcare. And so the repercussions of that was we were actually seeing sicker people later on in the year. So it was kind of a domino effect. As part of that, I guess I should probably give Beth and the committee a huge hug. The Fire EMS department were very fortunate in receiving Sparks funding to about, to tune of about $38,000, and CARES money right out of the gate. And the Sparks funding that rolled in was in excess of $430,000 in grant funding. So we were very, very fortunate in that. It was very much a team effort. Thank you for your leadership, as well as Finance for keeping all the books on everything and keeping our... Our lull time in April allowed for our creativity to come to light within the walls of Fire EMS, and Finance kind of kept our reins pulled back on us a little bit, so thankfully. Otherwise, I'd probably be a custodial resident down the street. October brought along a big new challenge for us. Traditionally, October is our prevention month, where we get to go out and visit kids in schools and so on and so forth, and that was something that was totally new. We didn't get to do that this year. So our community risk reduction team got together, and for the first time ever, we did a virtual fire prevention activities, which was a big hit to all of our school kids, as well as we were able to share that information on a much broader scale due to the modern technology and social media. Last but not least, we were one of three departments in the state of Kansas to provide in-house COVID testing to our employees. So we were able to quickly turn around. We were able to... did a virtual fire prevention activities, which was a big hit to all of our school kids, as well as we were able to share that information on a much broader scale due to the modern technology and social media. Last but not least, we were one of three departments in the state of Kansas to provide in-house COVID testing to our employees. So we were able to quickly turn around. We were able to do rapid antigen testing, whereas most everybody else was having to wait three days or longer to get test results. We were able to ascertain results within 20 minutes to determine whether or not we had people that needed to be isolated or quarantined and what types of repercussions that was going to have on down the road. So once we kind of got a handle on that, we were, we were able to open that up to other city departments and extend that, that service out to other departments and, and keep other city employees working and, and not allowing the virus to spread amongst each individual work group. So other than that, like I said, you've seen this document before. I just want to touch on a couple of real highlights for you. And if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Might get off easy.
I'm all about easy.
Thanks for all the great work that you and your staff did this year. It's great.
Absolutely. Yeah, it was, it was challenging to say the least, but it was rewarding at the same time. And it, it allowed us to grow a little bit, too. Think outside the box.
You get stressed, you learn, you grow.
Absolutely. Yep. Got to get out of our comfort zone.
It's not a bad thing.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And Steve mentioned what he, how much the fire department got overall in that one CARES program through the county, we got over $550,000 spread over all the departments.
That makes Donna happy.
And if Donna's happy, we're all.
Chief.
Nope, yes.
Commissioners, staff, I, year in review, like I said, well, like everybody has said this last year was a challenging year. I kind of feel like looking at our numbers, we didn't work near as hard as some of these other departments did because our numbers are actually down. And that's a good thing. We had to modify a lot of things. We, we had just over 22,000 calls for service, for police services in year 20, which is still a large number. But in doing that, our response times had to, they rose a little bit because we had to modify what we do because of COVID. You know, we, we did a lot of calls over the phone. If somebody needed us to be at a house or their, the business or whatever, they needed our presence, then we invited them to step outside so we have fresh air, we can talk to people. So we had to modify a lot of things that we've had to do. I don't really, it's one of my, kind of my thing, I don't like to not have that personal service to our community. We want to talk to people face to face. And so that was super challenging for us, too, is to, to, to make that difference because they don't get to see that interaction on how we help solve problems. So that was challenging, but we were able to overcome a lot of that. So a lot of our numbers are down. And just highlight, you know, a few of these things that, you know, are part one crimes, which is our, our, our primary serious crimes, you know, murders, rapes, assaults, things like that. A lot of our assaults are up. And we didn't get a lot of calls for service, which is making us a little bit nervous in of itself because people aren't going to work, they're not going to school, they're not being able to, if they're being abused, not have an outlet to tell somebody which prompts a call to us, which is concerning to us because this could be almost like a boomerang effect that we could get additional calls later on.
Right.
So, but we're prepared for that. We have, we have extra officers on staff to help to deal with. We train extensively to help deal with these victims and anything we can do to help them is absolutely. But that's why we try to get our message out there to, if you feel threatened or abused or anything like that, to open up to someone or call us directly. So like I said, a lot of our numbers are down. Finance probably doesn't like that too much either. We don't have a lot of arrests, but that's a good thing, too, where maybe we're making the message out there. That's our educational piece may be working. I don't know. Could be COVID. We'll see how next year pans out. Do you have any questions or concerns so far? As you go through the, we, as you know, we were displaced from our, from our facility. We were here at City Hall for a number of months. So we're back at our, our police department on 127th Street. So it's a fresh new look and a fresh new way of doing business, which is, it's been working out really well. We're going through some challenges and some of the, the construction side of things, but we're working through them as well. We had a few promotions. And with our numbers being down, you know, we had a pretty good turnover in, in employees as well over the last couple of years, just changing our culture within the police department to the positive and using this time to train. So we hired a number of new officers just last year to, to help, you know, our staffing and whatnot. So we use this time to train those folks. So there, last year was all about communication. I mean, last year was a challenge in just in law enforcement in general. We were put under a spotlight nationwide and in a lot of cases, deservedly. We had a really a, a line of communication that helped carry us through in Newton. So we didn't see a lot of the turmoil a lot of other communities faced through 2020. So.
So where did, where did Officer Little John go? Wasn't he a school resource?
He was a school resource officer. He, we, he's reassigned to the patrol division.
Oh.
So with his, he's, he's got a number of children. So he wanted to spend more time going to their, to their activities and whatnot on his time off during the day.
How's Ziva doing?
She's doing real well. She's in training this week, so, yes.
Now Ava?
Ziva, she's our, she's our new canine officer. She's canine, our dog.
Oh, yeah. Well, so where's, let's see, Bella?
Yes. Tony, Sergeant Hop still has her, we still have her. We had to retire one, one other dog before, or in 20 as well, but we picked up Ziva in, in 20.
Wow, because I remember when Carla retired.
Uh huh.
And you brought Bella, somebody brought Bella here. That seems like a long, I think Leroy was here. And that seems like a long time ago in a way. And then just in some ways, it seems like, because it would have been 2015 or 16.
Probably about in that area.
Somewhere in that area.
Yeah. And Ziva was in, Sergeant or Lieutenant Thompson has Ziva now. And we brought her in a few months ago. And like I said, that, she was purchased through asset forfeiture money, so zero tax dollars paid for in the maintenance of that, having that program, so.
Good.
Great job.
Thank you. Any other questions or concern? Now, don't feel like this is the only time we can have a conversation because I, it's, it's an open invitation for you to, it's an open door to come and see me anytime and we can discuss what others are on your mind.
I will. I would like to ask, how are you all doing?
We're doing well.
Okay.
Day by day.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. I've been praying for you all. Just wanted to know how you're doing. So good.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Michael.
Michael Lunsford with the Meridian Center. By now, I think you're all aware that 2020 was a very difficult year for the hospitality industry. I'll get into financial performance towards the end, but first I'd like to tell you a little you might not already know about how our year went. For that, let's look back to March 1st, 2020. We had just finished a week during which we held 11 events. We were 129% to budget. We had already booked more than twice as much revenue, 225% in fact, in the association market as we did during the entire year in 2019. I was extremely confident we would easily extend the Kemper record we set two years earlier of consecutive years making budget to 10 years in a row. Had to put that plug in there, right? Then, of course, everyone knows what happened next. COVID hit and every event we had booked over the next three months canceled. I remained optimistic but decided to take immediate action to cut expense. I cut my own salary and pulled back on marketing expense. I eliminated part-time hours along with all non-essential operating expense. I felt it was important to keep my chef and event manager because I believed I wouldn't have time to hire and train those skilled positions when events came back. I eventually had to make the difficult decision to reclassify both of those positions and reduce their hours to a weekly minimum. I also immediately started exploring ways to generate non-event revenue to help offset not only the revenue we had lost due to canceled events, but also to offset the payroll associated with keeping my two remaining employees. The goal was to find ways to serve the community while not stepping on the toes of other local business partners. My first idea was to offer evening meal service to the hotel. We, we pitched that and unfortunately, the hotel didn't, didn't want to pursue that at that point in time, so they turned us down. Next, we utilized our vendor relationships and we created what we called We Care packages of hard-to-find grocery items such as bleach, toilet paper, beef, et cetera. When stores caught up on those items, we pivoted and started offering take-home meals and desserts. During this time, Chef Katie was challenged to create menus dissimilar to what locally-owned restaurants offered, and she did that remarkably well. Unfortunately, Chef chose to move on to another career opportunity at the end of the year, but I would like to take a moment to share some of her efforts. I wish she was here so she could, I could recognize her in person. When we started selling take-home meals, I created a you buy one, we donate one promotion where we donated a meal to New Hope at the beginning and then later to Safe Hope shelters because we anticipated their donations would slow down during the pandemic. The response to this was tremendous, a reflection on the generosity of our community and led to the early success of the program. Katie was so excited to be helping the shelters, she started promoting our menus using her own social media channels and selling take and bake meals and baked goods to her friends, family, and fans. And they eventually started giving her additional donations to take back to the shelters. So she was selling, cooking, packaging, and delivering meals. And then her friends and family and fans, for those of you who don't know, she's a comedian. And so she has a very big following for that. So when I say fans, that's her comedy fans. And they started giving her stuff to bring back, to donate to the shelter in addition to what we were already doing. Her sales efforts accounted for a large percentage of the take and bake meal and baked good sales, which helped financially, but what she did for the shelters won't show up on anyone's P and L. Also, all of her, wait a minute, I skipped a line. I'm sorry, this is a very important line, I got to back up. At one point, Katie showed up with a full carload of donations and one friend even took her shopping specifically for the purpose of buying items for the shelter. So again, her, so all, in addition to her sales being a large portion of what we did, didn't show up on a P and L, they also took place outside of Newton. All of her sales took place outside of the Newton area. So the donations revenue she generated were imported into our community from elsewhere. In a year that didn't feel very good in a lot of ways, that was a tremendous morale booster. So I'd like to thank Chef for all of those efforts. Most of you know, we've historically held several community events throughout the year. While we canceled most of them in 2020, we did hold two socially-distanced.
Technical difficulties.
Uh huh. Just testing me, testing me, right? See if I paid attention? We did hold two socially-distanced comedy shows later in the year when restrictions loosened up. For the first one, I partnered with Mojo's and NMC Health, and we donated a portion of the proceeds to benefit full, frontline healthcare workers in our community. The second one was held to benefit Folds of Honor, which was a Kemper corporate initiative. Unfortunately, despite our best efforts to generate ancillary revenue and cut expense, we missed our 2020 budget goal. To help illustrate financial performance, I'd like to show a couple of slides. The first represents 2020 revenue. The blue line indicates revenue generated at just under 158,000. Our goal is 479,000. The yellow line represents event revenue from bookings we knew about, but which didn't book with us. The orange line shows the $225,000 in revenue from events that chose us but then canceled due to COVID. For comparison, the next slide is from 2019 and shows what a normal year looks like. As you can see, a lot more blue and a lot less orange. I'd also like to point out that the chart only shows revenue from events we knew about and not those which never called or picked up the phone or even planned an event due to COVID. Based on historical booking averages, then that number was at least $100,000. While I always regret missing a goal, I'm proud of the fact that despite losing roughly 325,000 in event revenue, we only missed our bottom-line Kemper budget number by $90,228. The last financial performance indicator I'll leave you with is the center's 2020 economic impact on travel and tourism. In a normal year, Meridian Center visitors contribute on average around $3.5 million to the Newton economy based on statistics from Kansas Tourism in partnership with the U.S. Travel Association. While that number was down significantly last year, the center still generated $1.25 million in total economic impact. Next slide, please. Lastly, I'd like to take a moment to thank each of you for the trust you've shown me and my staff in allowing us to continue managing the center. I truly appreciate your leadership and support. I know it was a difficult year. You had to make a lot of difficult decisions. And so thank you, and I'll stand for any questions.
I think that we just give you a free pass for last year and we'll pick up on that 10 mark this year, so.
I wish that were how it worked, but I know a lot of my, my peer group of golf courses out there, I've always, it's funny because I always used to say to them, they, they would congratulate me at our leadership conferences on the record. And I would always say, you know, I don't have to deal with snow, I don't have to deal with flooding, all of the things that our golf courses dealt with that kept them from making budget. And so the running joke was, I always said, there's no way we shouldn't ever make budget if I built a good budget. And now I've been proven wrong. But thank you for that. I appreciate it, Clint. Any other questions?
Has to be interesting to have a cook that's a comedian.
It was. You know, she, she held back at work. You didn't really see that unless she was on. Now, obviously, like I said, we did the comedy shows, we've done some of those in the past while she was here. And she had, she was a big part of that, too. She emceed, she also performed at those events. And so we really got to see that side of her come out during those events and we'll miss that.
Is there a new chef hired?
We're working on that. I actually have been recruiting that position. I have now, one, two, three, I have three interviews scheduled later this week and some, some decent-looking applicants, so I'm excited to see what's next.
Will those people be brought on in a full-time status or will it be?
It, it'll be classified as a full-time position. Obviously, we'll, we'll restrict the hours now while we're not as busy and then ramp that back up when we get busier with events. Yes, sir. Anything else? Thank you all again. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Michael. Melody?
There should be, it's okay. You're not that special.
It's the building.
Okay. So about this time last year, in fact, yesterday, we were welcoming the Flying Farmers of Kansas State Convention. They had a great time touring the Workington House, having lunch at the Carriage Factory Art Gallery, touring AGCO, getting presentations at the, at the airport, and having an ice cream social at their last night at the Comfort Inn. About two weeks later, everything changed. So, so did the CBB operations. So we did a fast pivot, knowing that, you know, travel and tourism was going to look a whole lot different for at least a year, probably two. And one of the first, so I, I looked at two, two specific things. One was information, two was budget, because the CBB's operating funds are funded completely out of transient guest tax, and I saw that going down a big dark hole. So the first thing that I focused on was the information. So we quick, I quickly built a webpage that was basically a COVID travel resource. And it was housed on the CBB's website and it had updated daily information about lodging, about restaurant hours, about attractions as they almost daily change their hours, closed, altered. It also had our local, our local public health information so that, you know, if you happen to be visiting this, this community. And it was also a great resource, it seemed, for, for the residents based on our Google Analytics. So that was a very popular page. We promoted it heavily on social media and in March alone, we had a Facebook reach of So maintain that. We still maintain it, although there aren't very many changes on it right now. So we kept maintaining that in those early days. We also, I also developed a blog that we, that I linked to that page. And that featured a variety of outdoor, fun outdoor activities, ideas for families. So, and one of the, one of the series of stories on that blog was a, a series based on the downtown walking tour. So we took, I took a block and kind of explained it, and those were very popular blog posts. And then, we adapted the online calendar to include virtual events and links to those, so it wasn't just as our physical events dropped off. And we kind of clawed out that next month, you know, and started to think, well, what are we gonna do? And that's where I appreciated the library saying that because I was seeing, you know, people from out of town, out of state, you know, accessing that calendar and hopefully getting some kind of sense of what our community is like. So, the second piece was budget. And so, Donna and I sat down and understanding that it was gonna be pretty rough, so, cut any and every expense I could think initially. Cut our advertising budget to basically nothing, except with the one exception of Kansas Travel Guide listings. So, right at the time that we shut down, the official Kansas Travel Guide that the Department of Tourism puts out was collecting the money in the listings for the communities. And these are small listings, they're about 80 bucks each, and they, and each town can put in as many or as few as it wants. And so, we had been building that presence in Newton because, you know, when you're flipping through and you'd see, oh, well, this town has two, and this town has 10, well, this town must be more fun to go to. And so, I really did not want to lose those because I felt like we were working on the 2021 Visitor Guide, or they were at that time, and I thought, you know, we're gonna get out of this eventually, hopefully in 2021. So, they wanted us to have a good presence. So, we spent about, I think it was about $1,600 for listings for 20 businesses. So, we maintained, actually expanded our presence in that guide, and what I didn't want to do was to go to the businesses, our hospitality partners, because I knew they couldn't pay. Even $80 at that point, you know, was going to be a lot to ask. And so, I felt like that was one thing that the CBB could do that would have a good impact for not a huge budget impact to the CBB. So, that was one way that we supported our hospitality partners. Another one was a spring photo contest, which, rather than giving cash prizes like we typically do in the fall, we gave CBB bought restaurant gift cards. And so, the spring photo contest emphasized outdoor activities, which is an area of photographs that we don't have a whole lot of. We have a lot of in-town and parks and things like that, but not necessarily that kind of thing. So, that was beneficial to the CBB for not a lot of money, and it supported, directly supported, our hospitality partners and restaurants. So, that was, those are some of our COVID adaptations. A lot of social media work to, because we cut our paid advertising, utilized anything and everything free that I could possibly get my hands on. So, a lot of social media, a lot of state tourism department partnerships utilizing their website for listings and things like that. I mean, their data and my analytics say people are still traveling, they're planning their travel, they're eager to get out whenever they're ready, and there's varying degrees of ready, but they're still looking. So, that segues into the website. Our traffic was steady compared to 2019, so people were still accessing the website, they were still looking at it. Other than the homepage, our most popular pages were events and dining, attractions, shopping, our COVID travel updates, and Amtrak. It wasn't all kind of dark COVID stuff. We did have some fun projects. CBB helped with the Newton Flag Committee contest. Started the Sesquicentennial Committee, so, and planning, we started that just before we shut down and had a core committee, never got a meeting in, but we have started meeting, and so, we have had our second meeting today, so we're looking forward to kind of getting that moving toward 2020, or yeah, 2022. And, let's see, oh, and in partnership with Historic Preservation, we are working, started working on a children's activity book. We got a grant from the State Historic Preservation Office to do a companion activity book to the historic Downtown Walking Tour, so the kiddos can walk along with their dot-to-dots and their word searches and kind of, that captures some of the history that kind of mirrors what's in that walking tour. And the photo contest, which is kind of a very popular community, as most of you know, project, and it's kind of a pet project for me, I really enjoy it. It's also very beneficial to the CBB because we get a lot of photos from professional and semi-professional photographers that we wouldn't ever be able to afford to commission or buy, and we get them essentially for the cost of the prizes. So, we backed off on the prizes this year, backed off on the number of categories, but still got a great response from the community, and that was something that I, in my board, were really determined to continue in 2020. And so, the calendar was a little bit up in the air. Funding for that really wasn't there, that we found a community partner and ultimately got the calendar printed at no cost to the CBB, outside of staff time putting it together. There were a few events, those are on the bottom corner of your page. Down there, one of the highlights for the community was the Smithsonian's Crossroads exhibit that was at the Coffin Museum at the end of the year. That actually was, we were one of only eight communities in the state of Kansas to be able to host that, so that was an honor. That's really the conclusion of my report. Do you have any questions?
Great adapting.
Thanks.
You survived.
So far.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Yes. Commissioners, hand it out to you, an annual report that includes several different groups here at the city that I have the pleasure of working with, and I will tell you, as everybody said, 2020 was a different year. Our goal was to maintain city services and to keep construction going in Newton. We knew that construction is important to our local economy, and this time, it was really important for those that were stuck at home because so many people wanted to do some home improvement projects, and so, we wanted to make sure that that was possible for them to keep our inspection office running. If you turn to page six, I'm just gonna flip through and hit the highlights here. Page six, we had four major capital improvement projects that were completed in 2020. Old Main Sewer Rehab, the Sand Creek Dam Replacement, boy, that's something we've talked about for years, and that is done, and everybody is glad, and it's working well. The water line out to the airport, completed that, and then the Law Enforcement Center, they're in there. We got a few items that we're trying to finish up, but it'll get done. Then, I would turn to page nine and 10, that is our building zoning and compliance statistics here, and this is where I'd point out that we had 73 more residential remodels than we did in the past, and you'll notice that building permit values look as though they are down in 2020 compared to 2019. These numbers fluctuate somewhat because this is the value of the permit. If you have a nonprofit that is adding on, say if Prairie View was doing some work, or Newton Medical Center, these are places that are not going to be paying taxes, like school improvements, it would show on here as a permit value because it's the value of the improvement, but that's not the dollars that we are going to receive for permits, that's under the permit fee revenue, and that was up in 2020, even though we had COVID going on, and that's because there were so many remodels and people were just doing home improvement projects right and left. And on page 11, we are covering environmental control violations, and I would note, as you know, we've talked about it a lot lately, there were 100 sidewalk complaints in 2020 compared to 22 in 2019. In fact, there were so few in years prior, that is included in the other category of our compliance reports, so we weren't even pulling that out before. Then, if you would turn to page 12, information technology is something that we don't always talk a lot about with you because they are providing a service in-house, and Brenda, she is our ringleader here, and she's wave. Brenda had a lot of projects this year, one of which was making sure we had everything at the LEC worked out, and her and our building maintenance staff, they ran like, I don't know, what, 98 different lines over there, right? Yes. And then, she worked real hard to make sure that we had this new system up and going here. During COVID, boy, did IT become important so that everybody could do business from home, from wherever they needed to, and not be on top of each other. So, we're thankful that we really had our ducks in a row in advance, and that worked out well for the City of Newton organization so that we can continue providing service to the public. On page 13 is Historic Preservation and the items that were accomplished there throughout the year. Then, if you go to page 15 is Park Maintenance, and I bet nobody has any idea that's over 16,000 acres of parks right away, waterways are mowed in a year's time by the staff. And I think sometimes it's forgotten as well, unfortunately, until you have to deal with this, but the city does have public cemeteries that we are the ones that maintain those. We treat those like a park, and they are on our rotation, and we had 100 full-size burials in 2020 and 57 cremations. We sold 71 plots and 60 headstones. If you turn to page 17, Street Maintenance. Street Maintenance, we had a rough year because we had some equipment problems with our slurry truck. That meant we had an opportunity to switch over to concrete and started doing some concrete work because we do have to pick and choose based on the materials that are available and the projects that need to be completed. So, there was some concrete work that was done that we had kind of been putting off a bit here and there, and some building improvements that we were needing to do to get our salt storage to the point where we could add an additional 150 tons, which becomes really important as we have found out in 2021, just when we thought 2020 was over and then the cold spell hits us, and we want to make sure that we have enough product available to treat streets. We've included a lot of pictures for you to look at here in the report this year, and if you would switch also to page 23, we would jump to sanitation, where you have heard us talking a lot about sanitation lately, and our big issue there this year, as you recall, is recycling and how we change that. You'll notice that tonnage for municipal solid waste increased because recycling decreased. Dealing with those issues, we're gonna see changes in 2021 as well, and we'll talk about some of that as we go through the budget process. And if you would then turn to page 2024, we talk about wastewater. That includes collection and treatment, and the big takeaway here is 678 million gallons treated at the wastewater treatment plant this year. That means 678 million gallons of sewage ran through our sewer lines this year, and that stuff came in nasty and it went out lovely, and it was discharged to the creek or the wetlands, and nobody would know that's where it had been. So, big kudos to our staff that are making that happen every year. We did a lot of sewer line cleaning, inspecting, quite a bit more than in normal years, I would say, just trying to really focus on that, and that is a part of, we have permits that require us to make sure that we're taking care of those things as well from a maintenance standpoint. If you turn to page 28, there is some more statistics about water production, treatment, and distribution. One thing that not everybody knows, you know, when somebody comes out and does a, you see locate calls, if you're gonna be digging underground, you need to call 811. Our city staff performs in-house locating services for all of our city infrastructure, and that, those numbers, they rise, you'll notice here in 2020, for, you're a little over 1,800. Emergency calls, 232, other, 494. So, we stay busy, making sure that our lines are located so that we don't have somebody born through those. I think the other important thing to note about water is our repairs went up in 2020, and, you know, infrastructure is aging, there were service line leaks, we get involved with those because we get the calls. And one thing I can't reiterate enough, and this seems counterintuitive to people, but if you see a water line leak, call 911, and they call out to our crews that are on calls, no matter if it's after hours or if it's during business hours, and then a crew will get dispatched out to take care of that, because if there's water leaking, that means there's trouble underground, and it also means the towers are gonna be losing water. We want to make sure that we are able to stop that as soon as possible. The other thing I would tell you is that we pumped 643 million gallons of water, and that means we treated the same. 643 million gallons in 2020. And that stuff was good quality, it came right out your faucet. So, again, kudos to staff that did that, and there's just a litany of information here. I will stop with that because there's just a lot of details, and you can peruse this at your will, and if you have questions, I am always available to try and help answer those.
How's the project where you're taking the solid waste and making potting soil or some--
Class A sledge?
Yeah, how's that going?
Yeah, we got a pilot project going with that, it's going well. It's certainly a process, and the environment, depending on the weather, that impacts it, so you never, you can't predict it exactly, but we're doing some mixing on that, we have some pilot piles, and we're gonna be using that as we achieve class A sledge on different piles of things, we'll be using that. And when I say things, I mean good stuff, that's good soil that we can utilize for projects. It's nowhere near perfection, let it that way.
Pilot piles should be included in your report next time.
Yes, pilot piles, we'll get there.
Any questions for Suzanne? Thank you, Suzanne. Anything else for this work?
No, we are incredibly grateful for all of our partners.
I'm incredibly grateful for all of our partners and entities and our department heads that were so willing to come do this for you all this evening. We, you know, we tried to group these all together, and again, because of COVID and our meeting schedules, we were just trying to play a little bit of catch-up, but we are very grateful for your time and the opportunity to do this on our new live stream so that we could share it with others in the community who often don't get to see these things when we do work sessions. Thanks, sir, we'll take a little 10-minute break if you are so inclined.
Thank you.
Thank you.